We will start the second session for this morning. This will go on till twelve forty. I'd like to welcome the Secretary for Food and Health and his colleagues. This is a session on health. Secretary, we have got your speech. Can you be very brief in taking us through it? I will try to be as brief as possible, Chairman. In two thousand and fifteen sixteen, the estimated recurrent government expenditure on health is fifty four point five billion, which amounts to sixteen point eight percent of the government's total recurrent expenditure and represents an increase of about zero point four billion dollars. New and additional resources available in this financial year are mainly used for the following services. The estimated expenditure of the HA is fifty four point two billion or an increase of three percent over last year. To meet service demand arising from growing population and demographic changes, we have the following initiatives: providing a total of two hundred and fifty additional hospital beds; providing additional operating theater sessions to ease the waiting time for surgeries; expanding the clinical application of the special drug for multiple sclerosis. And we are talking about new drugs. And enhancing endoscopy service by performing around five thousand three hundred additional endoscopic procedures; increasing the episodic quota of general outpatient clinics in five clusters by fifty five thousand attendances; setting up Hong Kong's fourth joint replacement center in NT East Cluster; strengthening the service of community geriatric assessment teams by conducting three thousand additional visits to residential care homes for the elderly; strengthening manpower of the psychiatric teams and introducing a peer support element to the case management program for patients with severe mental illness. Also, there will be an increase to the number of psychiatric beds in Seoul Hospital with a view to clearing up cases of severe intellectual disability on the waiting list and faces in the coming three years. The FS has also pledged to allocate to the HA a sum of ten billion dollars as endowment to generate investment return for funding public-private partnership, including the General Outpatient Clinic PPP program. Also, we have an additional amount of three hundred, two hundred and eighty-six million dollars to the Department of Health for service enhancement and new initiatives, including earmarking provision for the elderly healthcare voucher scheme; and then preparing for the implementation of the colorectal cancer screening pilot program for specific age groups; providing full-year funding for the implementation of the outreach dental care program for the elderly in residential care homes and daycare centers; launching a territory-wide education and promotion campaign to raise public awareness of mental health; providing support for the clinical information management system and participation in the commissioning and registration procedures of the electronic health record sharing system; strengthening the manpower support for child assessment centers and the Chinese medicine division; conducting a pilot program on neonatal screening of inborn error of metabolic diseases; promoting breastfeeding and enhancing the services of the elderly health centers. In terms of public hospital and healthcare infrastructure, as you know, at Tinshe Way and Hong Kong Children's Hospital, the construction is progressing as scheduled. Meanwhile, we are preparing for the redevelopment of Kwangwa Hospital, Queen Mary Hospital, and Kaichung Hospital, as well as extension of the operating theater block in Chinmung Hospital. We'll proceed with the development of a new acute general hospital in the Kai Tech Development Area. We will seek funding to expand the Hong Kong Red Cross Blood Transfusion Service headquarters and refurbishment of Hong Kong Buddhist Hospital and commencement of main works of faithman of United Christian Hospital. As for the IT side, we have the Territory Wide EHRSS. And as the bill will be passed by Let's Co., the bill is now being scrutinized. If the passage of the bill will take place ASAP, we plan to commission the first stage of the EHRSS by the end of two thousand and fifteen. Mental health, we have a committee working on it. After the review, we will launch improvement measures on a few aspects. Healthcare reform, as you know, the public consultation on the voluntary health insurance scheme and also regulation of private healthcare facilities. Well, that has been extended to the fourteenth of April, that is the consultation period. We are also reviewing healthcare manpower planning and professional development. Hopefully, there will be some proposals or recommendations within the year. With regard to manpower, I'd like to mention that in two thousand and fourteen, we're going to increase the examination sittings for non-Hong Kong doctors, and there will be flexibility in internship so as to encourage qualified overseas doctors to practice in Hong Kong. Meanwhile, in the coming two years, we actively consider increasing the number of publicly funded degree places in medicine, dentistry, and other health disciplines in the funding cycle for universities. Chinese medicine. At the policy address, we said that there would be a Chinese medicine hospital. We are going to promote an integrated Chinese-Western medicine pilot scheme. Also, in the budget and also in the PA, we mentioned that in order to develop Chinese medicine in Hong Kong, we are going to set up the assessment center in order to tie in with the DOH, which is now developing the Hong Kong Chinese Materia Medical Standards. Together with my colleagues, I will try my best to take questions from members. Thank you. Four minutes each. Mr. Wong Kwok-hing. Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, let's refer to the speech. I'd like to refer to Paranine, the voluntary healthcare insurance scheme. You are very diligent in promoting it, but I think you have to provide tax breaks in order to make it attractive. Secretary, can you strive to seek the cooperation with other departments, especially with the FS? This is the test of success or otherwise. And the number ten, paragraph ten, Chinese medicine development. I compliment the government for working so hard on Chinese medicine in this term of government. And you have given recognition to the status of Chinese medicine. You're also plowing resources into the promotion of Chinese medicine. What is regrettable, however, is that civil servants discriminate against the use of Chinese medicine.
Because for civil servants, in terms of the use of Chinese medicine, they are not subsidized, unlike Western medicine. And in fact, I asked the same question. I put the same question to the Secretary for Civil Service. And according to him, that's because the existing policy still hasn't been changed. So, Secretary, will you lobby the support of the CSP? Otherwise, there'll be a discrimination against civil servants on the use of Chinese medicine. Secretary. First, on the VHIS, whether tax incentives will be provided in future. I want to explain once again that in our consultation document, we have proposed an amount, and this is only for reference. As for VHIS, we must wait for the consultation period to end before we come up with a concrete proposal and to prepare for the draft of the bill. And only when the bill is passed can we implement VHIS. As for tax concessions, this will only be launched when the VHIS is implemented. Before that, no tax breaks will be provided. So, in fact, I firmly believe that by the time the VHIS is launched, the Financial Secretary will propose an appropriate level of tax concessions for VHIS. On the development of Chinese medicine, first of all, benefits for civil servants is undertaken by the Civil Service Bureau. And benefits are given to civil servants as employees of the government. And for Chinese medicine, it has a tradition of over a thousand years. But as far as Hong Kong is concerned, Chinese medicine development only started some ten years ago. So, we're still at the initial stage of Chinese medicine development in public hospitals. Mr. Felix Chong. Now, for healthcare reform in Paris Heaven, Secretary, you say that the healthcare manpower will be reviewed. Now, can you step up effort in this regard? Because we have the same problem. For medical students overseas or for Hong Kong medical students studying abroad, when they come back, their qualifications are not recognized. And we understand that a public hospital's waiting time could be as long as six or seven hours. And with an increasingly aging population, the problem will get more serious. If you don't change tact, then no matter how much manpower you groom locally, it's still insufficient. We talk about the quality of doctors, but we see that for medical students graduating from Hong Kong U and the CHK, we see that their qualifications do include some professional recognition from Edinburgh or other institutions in UK, etc. Secretary. Now, in many jurisdictions, in many developed countries, they have a standardized licensed exams for medical students who are non-local. And of course, under certain circumstances, the exams can be exempted. In Hong Kong, we have a similar arrangement, that is, there can be limited registration for these doctors. And we do have an arrangement for hospitals to recruit these foreign doctors or doctors graduating overseas. In fact, in the past two years, we have been working closely with the hospital authority. We have made much changes. And first of all, instead of one sitting per year, there'll be two exam sittings per year for the licensing exam. And the passing rate, as we observe, has increased significantly. And recently, the committee also adopted a new measure. The internship of these doctors graduating overseas will last only for six months instead of a year with experience. So with these measures, we should be able to recruit more doctors, in particular, medical students graduating from non-local institutions in public hospitals. In the long run, manpower needs for the healthcare sector in any jurisdiction should be enhanced through grooming and training locally. Mr. Felix Chong. I don't quite agree to that with that because Chief Executive recently mentioned that much has to be done to attract the second generation of emigrated Hong Kong citizens to come back. So, Dr. Han Nen Wang. Now, in Singapore, they said that before two thousand and twenty, they're going to increase the number of hospital beds by twenty-five percent. Their healthcare expenditure is just fourth, four thirds of Hong Kong, and they only have half the population of Hong Kong. And we have a huge fiscal reserve. We have three hundred billion dollars surpluses in the past year and a hundred and seventy billion dollars dish out of sweetness. Now, it is said here that two thousand eight hundred additional hospital beds will be provided, about nine percent increase. And it's not clearly said when the two thousand eight hundred hospital beds would be provided to the full, and there is no timetable. You say in the coming year, does it mean that in the two thousand and fifteen sixteen, some two hundred and fifty additional hospital beds would be provided? What about the remaining two thousand or so? Roughly, when in your plan will these beds be provided to serve the public? As for the general hospital in Kai Tech, we welcome that. When will the project be kick-started and when will it finish? Another question in your speaking notes, page three. Now, there are other supporting measures for cancer preventing and screening. Some two hundred and eighty million dollars, including implementation of colorectal cancer screening pilot program. What about breast cancer screening tests for women? Is it also covered under the two hundred and eighty million estimate, Secretary? Now, the two hundred and eighty, I mean, some eighty billion dollars will be provided, allocated for more hospital beds in public hospitals. And such undertaking will amount to an increase of hospital beds by two hundred, two thousand eight hundred. And to meet the future demand, with an aging population, we need six thousand more hospital beds. And this has been discussed at the panel. And we're talking about eighty billion dollar commitment for two thousand plus additional hospital beds. We don't have a concrete timetable yet, but at different stages, we're going to apply for funding approval from the FC. And by then, we should be able to let members know when the initiatives can be implemented. As for the situation in Singapore, I think it's hard to make this comparison. Anyway, you can say that Singapore is the only jurisdiction which is a developed country with healthcare expenditure or resources in healthcare less than that of Hong Kong. And colorectal cancer screening pilot program, you're correct, that it can be implemented by the end of this year. As for the screening test for breast cancer or mammary gland cancer, yes, there are some developed countries and jurisdictions which have started to work on this. But recently, there have been reports doubting the effectiveness. And in fact, in some jurisdictions, the programs have been called to a halt. So we have to be very careful. There are pros and cons. For example, there may be over-screening for some patient groups, and there may be side effects as well. So in Hong Kong, what we're going to do is to commission a university to conduct a study. So that this survey or study could help us find the answer. That is, if we have a screening test from, a memory gland screening test in Hong Kong, what will the effectiveness be? Next, Mr. Chan Kien Po.
I have a question on reply zero number zero zero eight. This is about the extent of incentives for the VHIS. And the insurance sector's position is unanimous. We want to have quality insurance products. And there should also be sufficient critical mass in terms of low-risk patient groups participating in the program for it to succeed. Tax breaks, we cannot rely on tax breaks as incentives. It's not attractive enough. For the middle-class retirees on their retirement, they would like to participate in a VHIS. But at the same time, because they no longer receive any income, tax breaks may not be an incentive for them. So we're looking at those with means. And without income, then apart from tax breaks, how can we make the scheme more attractive? Other subsidies and other arrangements are not yet implemented. And in summary, for the views collected, we're wondering if the insurance premium would be too high, whether there are sufficient incentives. So, Secretary, apart from tax breaks, are there any other incentives?
Secretary. Yes, after the first-stage consultation exercise ended, we received a lot of views on incentives for VHIS. And of course, the consultation for VHIS will be extended to the sixteenth of April. And we believe by then, more views can be collected. And we are going to collect the views and analyze the views. And as I said just now, during the first-stage public consultation, there are views on incentives. And of course, we will fully consider the public views. Mr. Chan Kien Po.
Chairman, I thank Secretary for understanding the importance. This is crucial because recently I've been attending seminars. It seems that members of the public do not question strongly on the insurance products. What they want is more incentives. Next, Mr. Vincent Fang. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on my question. FHB zero two zero. And the speaking notes of the Secretary. I understand that over the years, the government allocates some thirty to fifty billion dollars to HA, and the percentage is more or less seventeen.
This time in your opening remarks, the Secretary said that the spending amounts to sixteen point eight percent of the government's total recurrent expenditure, the lowest in the recent four years. And the increase is just about zero point four billion dollars this time. Given that with such a big surplus this year, I'm sure, well, the turnout surplus will be over a hundred billion dollars for this year. How come the spending for health is so meager? As we all know, our population is aging. How come the allocation is so tight for health?
My reply, zero two zero. Now, I said that although the recurrent expenditure is about forty-nine billion dollars and internal deployment is also required. That means if HA is lack of funds, it will have to make use of its reserves. So what is the government's plan for the future? Do you expect HA to exhaust all its reserves first before it have more capital injection from you? So why can't you assure HA by giving it more money? While we have a huge surplus, why can't you, why can't you take better care of the public's health?
We're spending sixteen point eight percent or seven percent of our total recurrent expenditure on health. That is just a rough figure. We've always maintained our undertaking, and the undertaking is seventy percent. We're not going to change this policy.
While you claim that you're not going to change this policy in view of our aging population, shouldn't you gradually increase the percentage to, say, eighteen percent?
Our overall draft estimates. According to my understanding, if I'm wrong, please correct me, we are always increasing the total amount of spending. While we maintain this percentage, that means we have also increased in actual spending on health. Mr. Vincent Fang, if you consider the impact on our quality of healthcare, you should look at the HA's budgeted expenses. There is an increase of three percent. You're correct in saying that part of the money is not from government allocation, rather, is from the internal funds of HA. That's true. The HA has got reserves. We should allow the, the reserves to be maintained at a healthy level. I can undertake to you that even though part of its reserves has been allocated to next year's expenditure, the level of reserves is still at a very healthy level.
Mr. Michael Tian. I know the issue of Columbaria was for the last issue. My question was on, not on implementation, but land issues. And I thank you, Chairman, for allowing me this question. I don't know whether the Secretary is going to answer the question or not because the Director is not here. I think this question has more to do with the Secretary. On average, Hong Kong people have to wait for three point five years, five, three point two years for a PRH state and for a niche, four point five years. That means it takes longer for our soul to be allocated resting place than our body, physical body. So last year, I dared to write a letter or petition to the country in my capacity as an MPC delegate. I got a reply from the relevant authorities that is, under the trade arrangements of SEPA, burial undertakers can operate their business on the mainland and they can find land to expand their business. And it's also mentioned that niches can save a lot of space compared to ground burials. And it's also safe and will lessen the burden on management. That means the problem with niches or Columbaria there is the mainland's management is not to the satisfactory of users. Now, can you please explore with the mainland? If land is available on the mainland, can the government invest in the construction of Columbaria? And then you can work through NGOs. You can subsidize NGOs to enhance the level of, to enhance the quality of service there. And we can allow some mainlanders to use the niches there. I'm sure this will be welcome because it appears they are not too happy with the quality of management by mainland operators. Perhaps this will be a win-win situation. If you don't ask, you never know. It may be a good thing. It may not totally address the demand for niches from Hong It may not totally address the demand for niches from Hong Kong residents. But you always have to adopt a multi-pronged approach. There is no single solution to address all issues regarding the eighteen districts where you encounter obstacles in all districts. I have recently received many letters for help. What I can help in getting a niche in public Colombaria. I said that everyone has to stay in queue. So will this be a possibility? Secretary, I mean Chairman, if you allow me. We have a three-pronged approach in providing niches. We will try very best to enhance a supply in public Colombaria. And secondly, we legislate to regulate the operation of private Colombaria. Now, I'm talking about public Colombaria. Now, if we can regulate them properly and if there is a proper balance, we can enhance supply. And we're trying to change people's mindset. Instead of ground burials, people should gradually adopt gardens of remembrance and also ashes in the sea. Well, the question is whether you're going to cooperate with the mainland. Through our efforts last year, we got the support on no objection in principle from some district councils and that in total could provide four hundred and fifty thousand niches. I'm not saying that that is enough. If we are not successful in changing people's mindset. But there's no harm in asking. You can check with Dongguan, just ask. Regarding your suggestion, we basically maintain an open mind. But I really doubt the feasibility, because in Hong Kong, even if we have a plan to build a Colombarium, but because on the other side of the border, there are residential developments. We have received many complaints. Secretary, no wonder you're so busy. You even entertaining complaints from the mainland.
Right, I'd like to ask a question about manpower of doctors and nurses. Reply oh oh one. Oh oh four. We are given some figures from the administration. In one five, one six, you intend to recruit four hundred and one thousand eight hundred and thirty doctors and healthcare personnel respectively. Can you tell us the wastage rate, number one? And secondly, as asked by Mr. Chong Kwok Pan, should you allow overseas-trained doctors to return to Hong Kong to serve? Because in the public sector, it's like it's at war. The wards, I'm talking about the wards, the doctors and also the healthcare staff are so busy. Hong Kong is such an affluent society. It's unthinkable that we do not provide more resources to recruit more manpower. People have to wait for at least six hours at A and D departments. And then we have makeshift beds almost at the left lobby of wards. Now, you encourage private hospitals to operate in Hong Kong, fighting for manpower from the public sector. We believe that we should improve our healthcare services so that doctors and nursing staff can more, serve more happily.
You talked about three hundred million dollars for recruiting extra staff. Is that enough?
Secretary. May I allow us two questions? First, the heavy workload of our doctors and nursing staff, that's true. And crowdedness in our public hospitals is also true. But you should bear in mind that we have plans to expand the number of beds and capacity and facilities of our public hospitals. For doctors and nursing staff, perhaps I should invite Doctor Leng to provide some information and see whether I need to supplement. Doctor Leng. In the coming year, we're going to recruit four hundred doctors. Discounting wastage and retirement, we have a net increase of one hundred and forty-eight doctors. We will have three hundred and twenty new doctors graduating from our university. So we'll be able to recruit more. Of course, every year we want to have more doctors worked up by twenty eighteen. When we have four hundred new doctors graduating every year, we can recruit more. I hope you give more opportunities to doctors trained overseas. Do you know what's in the reply? To increase ward rounds by doctors at weekends and also on public holidays to allow patients to be discharged earlier. What's wrong? What are you talking about?
It is because in the winter, it's the peak season for flu and our staff are working overtime already. At weekends, we usually have less doctors to go on ward rounds. So it's not, so it's not so easy for patients to be discharged at weekends. At peak seasons, we need more beds. More senior medical officers going on ward rounds at weekends can discharge patients as well so that on Monday, we can have more capacity for admission. Overtime at weekends is a special arrangement when there is acute shortage of manpower. I hope you can incorporate local students, trained as doctors overseas as much as possible. They are not really competing with private doctors and the market. So please do so so as to relieve our pressure.
Well, overseas-trained doctors with licenses in Hong Kong, they're welcome. And we continue to allow restricted, unlimited registration. You talk about restricted practicing registration in Hong Kong. Doctor Fernando Zhang, we have a shortage of doctors and we have an even bigger shortage in psychiatrists. Those serving children in particular, many children are suffering from attention deficit disorder and autism. They have to wait for more than two years to receive a first-time consultation, some as much as three years. This is utterly impossible. Psychologists and psychiatrists are experts of the view that zero to six is years is the golden period for receiving treatment. And it is entirely acceptable that doc, children have to wait for three years before they can be seen by a psychiatrist. You have boosted manpower. And the number of patients needing psychiatric care increased by twenty-six percent, but the psychiatrists only increased by eight percent. And for children requiring psychiatric service, the increase is eighty percent. It is not really useful. You ask them to go to another customer for help.
My question is, what plans do you have to recruit more psychiatrists from overseas? And also, what about training opportunities locally? And also, by way of service arrangement, can children receive other support services before they can see a psychiatrist? Secretary.
First, we of course understand that there is a growing demand for psychiatric services. Apart from severe mental illnesses, the increase is more with emotional disturbance. And also, children-related mental problems have increased. There is an increase in cases and also the diagnosis is now done more accurately. This goes to show that overall speaking, there is a big increase in the demand for medical services. And undoubtedly, in the short term, our manpower cannot catch up with all the growing demands. In the past few years, because of certain reasons, our manpower training was not meeting demand. And now we have to catch up. As I said, overall speaking, we will be publicizing the results of a manpower resources survey. And to cater for what can be predicted, we are saying that in the next two-year cycle, we need to have more allocation of funds to increase manpower training. Doctor Fernando Zhang, I hope you can be more specific. It is very clear that the children-related diseases, that part is a disaster. As for adults, they also have to wait a long time for psychiatric attention and medicine. They are waiting in terms of years, and that's unacceptable. I totally agree with Doctor Vincent Fang. It is not that we don't have money. Why is it that we are so stingy with medical services? Doctor Zhang would like to respond. Would you like to give the floor to him? Doctor Zhang.
Thank you, Doctor Fernando Zhang, for the question. Your observation is correct. The waiting time has been much longer in the last two, three years. I can give you some information. We do put a lot of emphasis on child mental illness. We have faced a situation of doctor shortage. Even so, we have deployed two more teams to Kowloon West and N T East. And this year, we are going to send another team to N T East. But the demand has grown by ten percent in a matter of two years. So it's impossible for us to catch up with manpower deployment. And actually, under the Secretary, we have a committee on mental health and they are looking at the demand for child mental disease treatment. And the good thing is that we are looking at combining training with learning. So doctors can concentrate on the putting together of treatment protocol. That will be a long-term solution. Mr. Albert Ho, Chairman. We have been hit by avian flu and over four hundred people have died. A bigger number than people who died from SARS in twenty oh three. We have always suffered from a big shortage of doctors and nurses. And now suddenly, we are faced with this situation. The entire medical system just cannot cope. As you know, some public hospitals have an overcapacity of a hundred and ten percent already. And the waiting time at the A and E department is growing and many people are affected. Also, we have an aging population and the pressure that is suffered by the medical sector will just be higher and higher. Let us look at question four, zero four three. And that is the median waiting time for specialist treatment is twelve to sixteen weeks. And if you look at many cases involved, like medicine, people have to wait one to two years. And we are talking about twenty-four thousand people and eye treatment, twenty-one thousand. And then surgical, twenty-two thousand. Now, I don't know, who are these people who are waiting for two years to receive specialist care? And we have put forward different proposals and solutions. And for example, can we make it more flexible for overseas doctors to practice in Hong Kong? My question is, given the present situation, the C E is still saying that departments should cut down on their administrative expenditure by one percent every year. I just can't understand how that can be done. The bureau directors really have to stand up against it. We have a lot of money in the treasury. We still have a surplus. Why are we asking departments to cut the administrative costs when we cannot deliver the services that are required? That is not logical. Secretary, I support you. I don't think there should be any cut. In fact, you should have more expenditure given to you.
Secretary. Chairman, yes, we understand that talking about the overall financial situation of the government, since we have to take care of the future economic situation, we need to do an overall adjustment. But in terms of medical services, apart from that overall adjustment, we know that apart from the hospital authority, we are actually giving bigger allocations. In terms of the public medical service delivery system, the government has not reduced this commitment. Or else you would not see this very major infrastructural project that is being launched to increase facilities. And also, we are doing a strategic review on healthcare manpower planning so that we can put forward targeted plans to increase training of manpower. But how are you going to come up with that reduction of one percent? The C E is asking you to do certain reviews so as to cut down on your expenditure. Are you wasting any money at all? Why are you asking to shrink your expenditure? If you can't do it, just say you can't do it. Well, in the process, I have said very clearly that the hospital authority will not just ask frontliners to cut expenditure across the board. But at the headquarters level, the hospital authority would take an overall look to see how resources can be better deployed. As I said, at the bureau level, if we need to have more resources, we will certainly still increase resources. Mr. Pun Shiu Ping, thank you. I have a few questions. I hope they can all be answered. If not, I can go for a written supply. First of all, one four four. Originally, the salary adjustment should take place on the first of April. But there is a delay of six months because of the operation of the Legislative Council. And also, there are a thousand two hundred and fifty people who have left the service for different reasons. And they will not benefit from the increase in salary. My question is, how much money are we talking about? And also, whether the H A would review this unfair salary arrangement? Secondly, one five two, asked by Mr. Wong Kwok Kin. This is about the elderly voucher scheme, healthcare voucher scheme. If the age limit is lowered from seventy to sixty-five, the extra expenditure will be about four hundred million dollars. Now theoretically, elderly people who benefit from the voucher scheme would go to see private doctors so that there will be less pressure on public hospitals and public clinics. My question is, will you review the voucher scheme so that you can lower the eligibility threshold to the age of sixty-five? Number three, two oh nine, the outreach elderly dental scheme. You have replied to say that you have increased six civil service posts for the purpose. I'd like to know how many of them are dentists and dental staff? Will you increase more manpower in order to take forward the scheme? Secretary. I would first deal with the second question. And then the first question will be answered by Doctor Leng. And the third question by the Director of Health. Okay, with regard to the elderly healthcare voucher scheme, as you can see, the pilot was launched a few years ago. And in fact, there has been constant review and improvements. We'll continue to do that and at the appropriate time in the view of, in view of the operation of this scheme and its effectiveness and also the use of government resources and also pressure on the H A, we'd like to see whether there is any relief. All these will be kept under constant review. You would not be benefiting me, right? Doctor Leng. With regard to the annual, annual salary adjustment, indeed, given the legal operation this year, there has been some delay. In the past, after legal supports the salary, usually, the board of the H A would endorse it in July. But there has been some delay this year. That is why it was endorsed only in January twenty fifteen. And we have to have the H A board endorse it before the back pay can be given. We know that that is unfair to staff, because all these years that it has always been done in July. At the last board meeting of the H A, the board actually said that they would go for July as the cutting point. So we have responded to the views of the staff. So you have dealt with it satisfactorily? Yes. And it so happened that there was a board meeting. And the money involved was
And the money involved was about $19 million. So we have met the staff's demand. Director? The outreach dental care program. We have a senior dentist, dentist, senior EO, EO2, and also a CO. And another one belongs to the accounting side, One Clark. So out of six, five posts have been created, and another one would be created this year. Next, Ms. Alice Mack.
Chairman? Question 207, also on elderly dental service. We can see that in 2013, 14, the people who patronized dental services was of a smaller number than in the previous three years. If you look at all the age groups and the total figure, you will see a lower number in 2013, 14 compared to the previous years. Why is that so? In Hong Kong, we only have 11 outpatient dental clinics. Is it possible that you can have at least one dental clinic every district? So we can have more public dental service? If you say no, you don't have enough dentists, and you can't do it? Now, if we look at another question, which is about the healthcare voucher, the elderly people will go to see Chinese and Western medical practitioners, and also, they need a lot of dental care. So in one question, you say that you would raise the amount for the voucher scheme. If that's the case, can you not relax the arrangements for dental service? Because the elderly have a high demand for dental services. You have high popularity ratings, Mr. Ko. And under the OALA, you say only elderly people who are over the age of 80 would receive dental service. I'm sure people will boo and hiss about that proposal. I hope you will do something about this. And then question 141. In the budget, there will be $10 billion for the HA in order to make use of the investment return to promote PPP. How did you come up with that figure of $10 billion? What kind of investment return are you going to expect from it? And what PPP can be launched? You have talked about certain plans in the reply, but you have not talked about the expenditure. So how can it be used, for how many years, and for what purposes?
Secretary, let me first deal with the question on healthcare vouchers, as asked by Ms. Alice Mack. When we rolled out the voucher scheme, we considered extensively the various kinds of services that elderly people could get from the community, including dental care, other allied health professionals' care services, and medical health care. And as I answered the other member's question, I also mentioned that for the elderly healthcare voucher scheme, we are keeping it under constant review and will continue to improve the scheme. As for another, a separate one, voucher scheme for dental care, I have some reservations because it will give elderly people less flexibility. So although we'll continue to improve and enhance the voucher scheme, at this stage, I am more inclined to allow dental care to be included in the voucher scheme as well. So are you going to raise the amount when you talk about improvements? Next time when we propose improvement, we'll definitely consider the views. As for the $10 billion, one of the initiatives that have been launched that may require a high amount of allocation is public-private partnership schemes. Because this is only a pilot scheme covering a few districts. When the scheme is extended to all districts, then more resources will be required. I don't know if my colleagues would like to supplement. For the $10 billion fund, if its interests or dividends are used for, to fund the public-private partnership schemes, they should be sufficient. Dr. Leng, about the expenditure for public-private partnership, it's about 120 million. As Secretary put it, for the $10 billion investment fund, at a return of 3% to 4%, we can generate about 300 to 400 million dollars interest each year. For example, we have public-private partnership schemes in three districts. And we need to forecast the resources needed for all districts. And for CT or MRI services, for cancer screening services, they can be provided in the private sector. So we'll come back to the panel and report to members on the details of our scheme.
Mr. Chan Chi-sen. Altogether, I had some 10 questions for Dr. Ko, but only one reply from Dr. Ko. I'd like to point out my concerns. And I look forward to Secretary's reply. And my concerns include the default payments by mainland expectant mothers in public hospitals, and also fines imposed on mainland tourists, and default of fines, and waiting time for sexual reassignment surgery for transsexuals, a longer waiting time. Now, my first question is about babies with both genitalia. And I ask if the statistics are being kept by the HA. I wonder if HA has this concept that when a baby is born, the baby carries both female and male genitalia? Or is it regarded as some kind of defect with, say, missing of a finger? Because it has to do with the choice of gender and sex minorities' rights. Will it be up to parents to decide either genitalia to be removed as soon as the baby is born? Or will the baby be allowed to choose his or her own sex when he grows, or he or she grows up? But my question hasn't been answered. The reply is that the doctor will be consulted, and if necessary, referrals could be made to the surgical department, and then counselling can also be provided. Well, the baby is just born. How can the baby receive psychological counselling? Secretary, about the last question, let me say something about that first. Mr. Chan, I hope you understand that about babies with ambiguous genitalia, that is, the baby having both female and male genitalia, it's a symptom, not a diagnosis. So from the perspective of HA, as far as the computer system is concerned, there is such a diagnosis of disease. So I'm asking the HA to review this. For such babies, there is, say, a congenital adrenal hypoplasia. There is such a disease. And I'm asking the HA to review whether there is such a coding and see if statistics could be retrieved on that. But as far as babies with both genitalia is concerned, this is just a symptom, not a diagnosis. Well, I ask that question not only because I want to know how many people are involved. Yes, I understand why you ask the question. That is why I am asking HA to review the diagnosis for babies with congenital genitalia. And we'll see if there is a code in the computer system for that. If so, we can give you some information. As for the other questions on, say, mainland expectant mothers and type 2 babies, and also SRS surgery for transsexuals, I'll defer to my colleagues from the HA and also for the Tobacco Control Office. I see Dr. Leng is still discussing with others. So let's talk about tobacco control first. For the TCO, for the, there are 185 and 283 notices for default of fine, and the default payment amounts to $770,000. Then do you have a breakdown? I'll need to go back and see if we have a breakdown of figures. If so, please give the figures to Mr. Chan. Dr. Leng, about mainland expectant mothers or non-local expectant mothers giving birth to babies in HA. As I recall, the figure is dropping. I mean, for as far as default payment is concerned, the figure is dropping. As for sexual reassignment surgeries, yes, we agree that we need to allocate more resources, and we need to improve the service. And in the past, surgeries such are conducted in Ruffingji Hospital. And now, the HA will set up a new center for reassignment from male to female and female to male. And we'll also step up our resources so as to shorten the waiting time. Mr. Chan also mentioned psychiatric support services. Now, for different clusters, we do provide such services. And for urgent cases, priority will be given. And we're also looking at enhancing the services and increasing the service capacity. Next, Ms. Professor Joseph Lee. Five questions, Chairman. 074 and 075, according to the reply to these questions, for turnover of nurses and allied health professionals in 2015, the turnover rate is very high. My question is that for the first two years, because there won't be any pay increment, the newcomers would often leave. Do you have any policy to retain them? Second question. 081. That's the reply zero number. In part B of the question, we're talking about the primary care directory. I understand that the secretary will put optometrists in the directory as well. And why would you do that? What about PT and OTs? Will the therapists be included as well? If so, when? Third question. 176. 176 is about health centers for elderly. And in the first part of the answer, the averaging time for elderly health centers is about 20 months. And in certain districts like Saiyin, Puen, Wan Chai, Yamate, Kowloon City, etc., the median waiting time, it's over 30 months. And you have additional manpower, but the manpower is limited. Just a few clerical officers and three nurses and one doctor. Well, just stop at the three questions for the time being. I'll ask Dr. Leng to answer the first question, and the Director of Health to answer the second and third question. Yes, Dr. Leng? Now, we've been discussing with colleagues on pay increments. On retention of manpower, of course, there are different measures, including training and promotion prospects. As for, for example, professional nurses' prospect, they can be promoted to, say, consultant nurse. And we have been doing that. And we also look at the financial aspect of things. We also look at expenditure, for example. Director? On primary care directory, for optometrists, we are in the process of including them in the directory. We need to collect data and consult the optometrist board for the sake of avoiding conflict of interest. As for physiotherapists and occupational therapists, we need to complete the work for optometrists first. As for elderly health centers, in this and next, in the next financial year, we're going to add two clinical teams, including doctor nurses and other health professionals in, first of all, Seoul Lake Yoon, and also in Wan Chai. Apart from these two clinical teams, we also, earlier on, started internal redeployment. For clinics with fewer attendances, we would allocate a quota for new testing services so that the waiting time can be improved. Well, let me go on with my other two questions. 060, about HA, HA's redevelopment project. According to the reply, the HA will need to absorb the resources or make a commitment before further injections. Now, these are just minor projects. Why do you need the HA to take up the commitment first? Well, the other question is about manpower. According to the government, in 2014, 15, the government is short of 500 nurses and 100 or so allied health professionals, so 480. And if so, how many additional nurses and allied health professionals will be recruited? I'll defer to Dr. Leng for this question. You're talking about increasing service capacity? My question is, actually, I'm helping you get funds for minor works. Well, $13 billion have been allocated by the government. And the funds allow deposit with the HMA with interest generated. And let me say something about minor works. Because we're engaging a term contractor, we need to make sure that there is sufficient manpower. And different clusters may have different priorities. So every year, at least $1 billion will be spent on minor works. And it may be increased to 1.2 to 1.3 billion dollars or as much as $2 billion with more interest generated.
Secretary, second question. Mr. Wong Ting Kwong, thank you, Chairman. I've got two questions. First, para 10 of the secretary's speaking notes. I don't doubt the secretary's concern for development of Chinese medicine. It said that you're going to start the preparation work for the testing center. All right, in addition to regulating the quality of Chinese patent medicine, there is also some fake products. Some Chinese patent medicines have names quite similar to famous brands, trying to pass off as the real brand. Have you considered the impact on the sales of these Chinese proprietary medicines? All countries have a great demand for healthcare services. Rather the mainland. I received a complaint on the 10th earlier, somebody sprained. uh, uh, earlier, uh, somebody, uh, sprained, sprained, uh, his ankle, and he went to A and E at, uh, Chung Kwan Oh. And, uh, he received a follow-up consultation date of, uh, twenty eighteen, the sixth of June. And he, uh, said, he joked that perhaps he would have to, uh, be fitted with a prosthetic leg. So, uh, he injured his leg on, or feet or foot on the tenth of January, and yet, uh, the follow-up consultation is, uh, scheduled for the sixth of June, twenty eighteen. Secretary, of course, it's impossible or hard for me to comment on an individual case without the details. But if, uh, it is a real case, then, uh, uh, perhaps the doctor's judgment is that the injury is very minor, and that's why, uh, the follow-up date is, uh, scheduled, so far away. That's my, uh, common sense in medicine. But, uh, if you'd like to follow up on a specific case, perhaps, uh, it should be on another occasion. Well, if in twenty eighteen, a sprain, a sprained ankle is not yet affixed, then you don't really have to see, uh, the doctor anymore. Director.
Under the Chinese medicine ordinance, we look at the quality, safety, and efficacy of, uh, proprietary medicine regarding, uh, infringement of a trademark and other things. It is not under this ordinance. We have other law enforcement agencies, uh, to see whether, uh, there is any, uh, breach of the trade description ordinance. We've only got one government, although many departments and consumer councils, uh, I mean, uh, consumers will look to, uh, the government for various matters. According to, uh, some reports, over nine thousand, uh, proprietary medicines are waiting to be registered, and only four hundred of them have been handled or processed. So how are you going to expedite the processing? Thank you. Since the commencement of the Chinese medicine ordinance, uh, something thousand hundred and eighty applications for registration has been received. Eight thousand five hundred and seventy have been given HKP, provisional, uh, registration. And, uh, the, um, names can be found on the relevant website. And, uh, to, uh, get, uh, the full registration, they have to give us documents on, say, the reliability, uh, so and so forth of the drugs concerned. Uh, we've been communicating with these applicants all along. So we've really adjusted the deadline for submission of, uh, required documents. As for, uh, full registration, uh, yes, uh, there are applications on the list. We will target, uh, those, uh, that, um, have found to be problematic or with a lot of complaints, and we will tackle them first.
Madam Chen Yuhang. I think, uh, um, the three questions I'm going to ask are certainly not new to Dr. Ko. According to, uh, the government, for the seven, uh, clusters of the HA, uh, Wan Tai Shin belongs to Kowloon West. And then, according to a recent survey, Shamshepo is the poorest district in Hong Kong. Wan Tai Shin has the highest elderly, um, population, and, uh, you have the most number of CSA households in Wan Tai Shin Lower Estate. Uh, Wan Tai, Shamshepo has over two million, uh, Wan Tai Shin, uh, Kowloon West have to serve a cluster, uh, serve a population of over three hundred thousand. Well, what happened to, uh, A and E Services and night clinics? Wan Tai Shin District Council has been asking for more than a decade that, uh, A and E department be provided in the vicinity. Uh, the lady of, uh, her lady hospital, uh, in Wan Tai Shin is being renovated. I hope you agree with me. Kai Tech Hospital can only be commissioned in more than ten years' time, so how are you going to tackle this transitional period? And I followed, uh, this, uh, meeting upstairs, and I rushed here to ask, uh, Dr. John this question regarding, uh, screening for breast cancer. He said that there are different schools of thought in other countries. Dr. Ko has, uh, debated with specialists over this subject a number of times. For breast cancer, it's already the number three killer cancer in Hong Kong. This is some quite a problem. Uh, Dr. Ko, uh, said that more studies have to be conducted. When I discuss with, uh, specialists, well, uh, all diseases should be treated at an early stage, and examination or screening is so important. I think, uh, patients of breast cancer, including myself, uh, feel very strongly about this. Why have you, uh, consistently rejected a screening for breast cancer? Now, um, dental services. In twenty thirteen, according to you, uh, vouchers, uh, for dental services for elderly, thirty-six thousand of them, uh, used the vouchers. And in twenty fourteen, uh, the number increased to seventy-three thousand. I had a residents' meeting, uh, two nights ago, and, uh, many elders asked me this question for use of elderly healthcare voucher for dental services. We are not convinced when doctors at Ko told us that there aren't enough doctors or dentists. Uh, regarding Wan Tai Shin, it's true that the district has, uh, always reflected to us the need for, um, special attention. Yes, Wan Tai Shin has a big population and, uh, the population is aging. It is now put under Kowloon West, under HA's clustering, so, uh, patients will have, uh, to consult doctors at another, uh, district. This is not desirable. But it doesn't mean that we can address the problem by setting up an A and E department at an undesirable location. In the long term, we must wait for the acute, uh, general hospital in Kai Tech to start operation. And, uh, later on this year, we will have a review report from HA. It will make recommend, it will have recommendations, uh, on adjusting the clustering arrangements of HA. Secondly, regarding, uh, screening, for general screening for breast cancer. Now, if, uh, there is a woman who has, uh, gone through screening of a breast cancer, and, uh, if, uh, he is found to be at an early stage of breast cancer, of course, it will be of use. It, uh, will, uh, prevent, uh, the breast cancer to develop into a later stage. But, but if, uh, we, uh, go for general screening of the population, well, this is not just controversial in the world. There are more and more reports saying that, uh, this practice is, uh, questionable. It may be able to help a small proportion of women. It may help them to, uh, identify breast cancer at an earlier stage. But that can lead to, but that can be false positive, uh, leading to unnecessary diagnostic procedures costing complications, and there is also a negative impact on her psychology. So more and more countries uh, uh, have stopped the screening of breast cancer, although they have been doing that for a while. So for myself, I believe that even specialists in Hong Kong have different schools of thoughts to deal with this matter proactively. Now, we are not just, um, uh, sitting on our hands. To tackle this problem, we must adopt a scientific and evidence-based approach. So we have commissioned a university to conduct a study to see whether screening for breast cancer in Hong Kong is effective. We will look at the effectiveness before we come to a decision. But secretary, when will you decide? I've been, uh, talking with you for a few years. I don't know whether Dr. Chen, Chen, have found more information. We have commissioned a university to designing a study. It will be one or two years before we can have results. One or two years? For clinical studies, it cannot, uh, be completed in a couple of months. Uh, Ms. Chen Yuhang, can you wait for, uh, your second round? You spend over six minutes. If I allow you to go on, it's unfair to other colleagues. Mr. Paul Zhi, do you have other questions? Uh, then I'm going to spend my own four minutes. Secretary.
I'd like to follow up on the questions by Ms. Emily Lau and Mr. Chung Kwok Penn. Uh, regarding manpower shortage of doctors in Hong Kong, whether overseas-trained doctors should be allowed to do practice here.
Last week, I had, uh, a breakfast meeting with, uh, Professor Joseph Sung and also the CE. And according to Professor Sung, Hong Kong U and CU are unanimous in, uh, asking for relaxation. Uh, let me declare interest. My, uh, daughter and also my son-in-law are doctors trained overseas. And I have, uh, told you once that they would like to come back to practice, and I asked, uh, for the, um, uh, procedures. Uh, because of my son-in-law, I think I have, I am a little bit, um, familiar with this subject. You told us that there would be, after a review, the passing rate of the licensing examination here has improved. But let me tell you, unfortunately, we do not have the Hong Kong school examination now. If there were, I think you would failed the Hong Kong CEC too. So you asked and a specialist doctor to sit for an examination of the medical council. Perhaps some of the basic knowledge, uh, would, uh, uh, be lost.
Yes, there will be more examinations, and the passing rate is higher, but then it doesn't mean that you will recognize their specialty. Later on, you may be given the status of a doctor, but then you still do not know whether your specialist status will be recognized. If I am a specialist, how? Am I going to consider coming back or not? So, secretary, I hope you will really look into the matter. In fact, the two medical schools welcome such a development. Just now, uh, Dr. Leng said in twenty eighteen, nineteen, there will be more doctors graduating from their medical schools. But does it mean you are going to be able to meet demand? And overseas-trained doctors would have experience already, and you don't have to fork out the money to train them? So why do you want to keep them out of the door? When I talked to you the first time, secretary, you said, "Well, yes, but they can't use Cantonese." No, my daughter and my son-in-law know Cantonese. They can read Chinese, but yet they cannot come back. What's gonna happen? Let us all be frank, secretary. I don't think Dr. Leng will object to having overseas-trained doctors come back to help him. And I have heard the agreement of the two medical schools. My understanding now, very possibly, is that private doctors in Hong Kong are setting the threshold so high that overseas-trained doctors will not be able to come back to fight for business with them, so they can charge exorbitant fees. I don't want to use more than four minutes, but, uh, my question for you is, but you may not be able to answer it anyway, is that shouldn't you reform the medical council? So there will not be so many private doctors there. Last time, uh, during the scrutiny of the vet law, uh, Dr. Ann Chang said that hopefully the ratio will be one to one, but the medical council is six to one. What will be the reform for the medical council so that the threshold will not be set so high so they can resist, uh, the people coming back from overseas? So that, uh, they need to adjust the fees they charge. Will you consider that? Before I answer this question, I'd like to ask Dr. Leng to provide the passing rate of the licentiate examination and how it has changed over the years. Dr. Leng, or Dr. Zheng. The passing rate now is almost thirty to forty percent. It used to be twenty percent. There are more examinations, and we also allow for people to have a second chance if they fail the first chance. Secretary, I understand there has always been this aspiration. If there are senior doctors or specialists who have worked for many years, and then you ask them to sit, uh, a, a basic examination, they may have difficulties. Uh, that I can understand. But the original, um, objective of the licentiate examination is such that doctors who work in Hong Kong should first of all, uh, be general practitioners before they become specialists after training. We require them to sit a basic examination. That itself doesn't go against the principle. But in reality, um, this is a difficulty. So now we are looking into the difficulties encountered, and it is found that some overseas-trained doctors may find it difficult to sit an examination of the present format. The two medical schools in Hong Kong are also reforming the examination format so that they can by and by align with the international format. If that is done, the difficulty level will go down. And that is why we see that, uh, in the last two years, we see a higher passing rate. As for specialist doctors, in fact, it's not as, what you said, Chairman, that you have to, uh, pass a hurdle and then you seek further recognition. If you are already a specialist, um, and you have the status overseas, you can, in fact, go to the Hong Kong Academy of Medicine for assessment and accreditation to see whether you can be accepted as a fellow of the Hong Kong Academy of Medicine. So we are talking about two, uh, systems. Overall speaking, uh, we have done some reform with the medical council, and indeed, we can see that there are more overseas-trained doctors coming back to Hong Kong. And maybe Dr. Zheng can give you more figures to let you know how many more overseas-trained doctors we have engaged. Dr. Zheng. Talking about the passing rate, uh, I gave you the rate and I can give you the actual figures. In the past, it used to be a hundred and twenty doctors who would pass the licentiate examination, but now we allow them to sit another time. And there would be, uh, two examinations per year, so the figure instead of twenty would be sixty. And the, uh, medical or, or Director of Health is engaging, uh, doctors with limited registration. Now there are thirteen in the system now, but, uh, we will continue to do it. Four members would like to ask questions in the second round anymore. Uh, Mr. Paul, chair the first round.
Chairman. I thought I wouldn't have a follow-up, uh, right here, but listening to that last reply, I'd like to seek more information. I agree with you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Recently, we vetted the Amendment Bill on Veterinary Surgeons, and there was a lot of, uh, reaction. I'd like to ask about doctors now and how high the threshold is. I'd like to ask a follow-up on the figures given. Now, I, I may not be, coming to grips with all the actual figures, but I'd like to ask for the applicant figures every year. Can you tell me how many applications we receive every year from overseas-trained doctors? Dr. Zheng. You may be talking about two situations. One, those who apply to come to Hong Kong to sit the licentiate examination. They, uh, there are three examinations they have to sit. And the most difficult one is the clinic. And the most difficult one is the clinical examination. These doctors may find it harder to pass that one. And every year, there would be about over a hundred people who are interested. But as I said, there are now more examinations. And now sixty can pass the examination, but they may have taken the examination over a number of years. And as for the hospital authority, when they recruit overseas-trained doctors and how many people are applying, we set conditions. We say we'd like to have experienced doctors. And we have to look at the different specialties. And we may be talking about twenty to thirty applicants. But as to how many can pass in the end, it is difficult to predict. You said for the licentiate examination, there are about a hundred odd who apply. And you talk about sixty. Is that for one year or for a number of years? Sorry, can you give me the timeframe, Dr. Zheng? I was talking about the three parts of the examination, a written examination, an English examination, and a clinical examination. They have to pass all three examinations before they are licensed to practice in Hong Kong. What, how should I put it? Applicants for the first exam, some of them may fail, and then they will sit the examination again. And after that one, they would go for the second part. So the examinations may be taken over a stretch of a number of years. If they perform well in examinations, they would be able to get recognition after one or two years. But some may take five or six years. And the number sixty, what is the timeframe? Well, that is the final figure for this year because there are two examinations and also they can sit the examination more than once. But how many years ago did we start to allow overseas-trained doctors to come back? Well, let me try to clarify the questions. Non-locally graduated doctors and those who come back to take the licentiate examination. Now, that arrangement has been with us for a number of years. Mr. Jay would like to note that the change in the passing rate in recent years. We'll get the D of H to go back and collate the figures for you. So we know how many can pass the final part every year. Well, you have to also pass the last part of the examination. And then we can give you the figures of people who pass part three every year. Then we can show that there have been more in the most recent examination. But talking about applying to the hospital authority for a post, Dr. Zheng was talking about those people with limited or restricted registration. In other words, you have not passed the examination, but you want to practice with limited registration. Now, Dr. Zheng was giving you the figures. And then there is another figure about the number of people who have passed all three parts of the examination and those who are recruited by the H A. Now, that would form another figure. So I'm saying this for the sake of clarity. And let us supply the figures after we have collated the figures. I think you should also cover overseas people and also local people who are trained overseas. And then you should tell us how they do in the three parts of the examination and also how they perform with their practicum, et cetera, before they are actually licensed. Four members would like to ask a second round of questions. Would more members like to register for the second round? If not, everybody would be given three minutes. Ms. Emily Lau, Chairman.
I'd like to talk about mental health. Some members have asked questions already. Secretary, you should know that this is a disaster area. In your speech, you talk about a committee that it would look into the policy and services, et cetera. How much longer are you going to take? For food safety, you talk about a gradual approach. But then here in this area, I think you have to take a broad-brush approach to help the elderly, children, and other people. I hope you will do more. How much time will your committee take before it can do anything?
Chairman, we have set up that committee for a year. And we are not just waiting and doing research and not doing actual work. There are four areas that we are working on. First, people with serious or severe mental illnesses. We have already completed the review on this part. And there will be, actually, two actual measures have been taken. Number one, we have pointed out in the P A that in every district, the, there will be case management. In other words, there will be case management in all eighteen districts. And if severe mentally ill patients would have to use new medicine, then with allocation to be given over a stretch of two years, basically, in this year, we'll be able to allow all patients who need the new medicine to have them. This is about serious mental illness. And then we are going to tackle common mental illnesses or what we usually call emotional disturbance cases. We have a big caseload here. Recently, at mental health outpatient clinics, we can see a big surge of patients. And the majority of them belong to this category. We understand that if we only rely on visits to doctors, that may not be good enough. So psychiatric nurses and family doctors are working with psychiatrists. We hope to train up more family medicine doctors and psychiatric nurses so that when these cases are confirmed, they can do follow-up with patients. In other words, non-psychiatrists will be able to do follow-up so that we can provide a lot of relief to this part of our work and shorten the waiting time. Number three, for children, if we are talking about autistic children or those with dyslexia or those who have A D A H, as other members have said. Sorry, I need to be very tight with time control because we need to end at twelve forty and three other members are waiting. Mr. Albert Ho, I was asking for the waiting time at Specialist Outpatient Clinic. This is a longstanding problem. There are still many specialties whereby the average waiting time is between one to two years. There are over twenty thousand people in this category. I don't understand what would happen to people who have to wait for more than a year? What about cataract patients? They may become blind already.
Or for intestinal problems, perhaps there'll be a perforation before you can deal with the patient at the A N E. So my question is, is the H A aware of the situation and how are you going to deal with it? You have a triage system. And for the twenty thousand cases with average waiting time of over a year, what consequences will there be for these patients? And even for follow-up appointments, the waiting time is quite long. Well, you don't have sufficient manpower at the moment. Or is it the case that you don't have a long-term policy to improve things? You just want to push patients to the private sector. And yet, we're talking about one thousand, two thousand dollars consultation fee in the private sector for specialists. And patients may not be able to afford the fees. Do you have a policy to address the issue? Let me first take your question and I'll see if my colleague will supplement.
Well, you're correct, as far as the figures are concerned. In the public healthcare system, we have seen a great surge in demand. And due to various reasons on facilities and manpower, we are in quite a tight situation. So yes, it is necessary to implement a triage system. That means experienced nurses would look at referral letters from private doctors. For serious cases, critical cases, priority will be given. Usually, for cancer patients, the waiting time will be one of two weeks. But this is in fact not satisfactory because even for patients in a stable condition, if they're left to wait too long, then it will not be satisfactory. The other question is, for the large amount of referral cases, is there capacity to deal with these referral cases? Because many of these referral cases are done internally from other specialties under H A or from A N E. And we need to ask whether there are other ways to deal with the cases expeditiously. Next member, Mr. Tang Kapiu, four minutes.
Now, first question on dental care. I believe this has been covered by other members. For answer one five two is clear that in 2013, there were thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-three cases of using the voucher for dental care. And in 2014, the figure jumped significantly to seventy-three thousand five hundred and eighty-three. So there is a great demand from elderly people on dental care. And for the C C F, only elderly people over the age of eighty would benefit. Now, another question is on one-two-eight. Ms. Alice Mack's question on manpower for the A N E. And I feel quite shocked. For North Lantau Hospital, there are twenty-two doctors at the A N E. And I'm pleased with that. But unexpectedly, for the Prince of Wales Hospital A N E unit with more attendances, there are only twenty-one doctors at the A N E. However, for the Prince of Wales Hospital and the Princess Margaret Hospital, they're of a similar scale with similar number of attendances. I don't know why. I mean, no wonder. According to a media report, you need to wait for over twenty hours for A N E service there. Three questions. First, on using elderly healthcare voucher for dental care. I think this is related to other members' questions. It shows to some extent that the voucher scheme is able to help elderly people so that resources can be used for dental care for elderly people. And we're talking about one hundred and thirty thousand elderly people over the age of eighty and priority should be given to them. After that, we can then extend the program to elderly people between seventeen and eighty. As for manpower at A N E, I will defer to Dr. Zheng. For manpower at North Lantau Hospital, the situation is special because the North Lantau Hospital is not yet an acute hospital. And they may need to refer doctor, patients to Princess Margaret Hospital. And in the course, we may need A N E doctors to monitor the situation. So that accounts for more A N E doctors at North Lantau Hospital. As for the Prince of Wales Hospital, about ten doctors would be serving at the Prince of Wales Hospital due to training and other reasons. So altogether, the number is more. But it's really hard to account for that. There are only, well, for Princess Margaret Hospital, twenty-nine of them. For Tuen Mun, forty-two A N E doctors. And yet, for the Prince of Wales Hospital, this is the leading hospital, and yet they're only twenty-two. In fact, there are seventy-seven hundred, there are seventy, more than thirty doctors, actually. Now, if that is the case, then it's hard to explain why this only happens to Prince of Wales Hospitals. Now, in fact, yes, there is a problem with recruitment. Why is it that for N T E C, recruitment is more problematic? Because this is the university hospital. Of a different post, we have different supporting measures. And they've tried to recruit new graduates to join the team. And we are striving to do this matching. For A N E doctors, you think that you're not keeping them there. The problem is you can't recruit sufficient doctors. They're short of ten doctors, I mean, regular doctors. But through rostering arrangements, we could make up for the ten, the shortfall of ten. Next, Dr. Helena Wong. I'd like to follow up on zero-zero-four, F H B, H, zero-zero-four.
On retirees and new recruits. Now, if we're looking at the doctors who have left. For Hong Kong East, you have thirty-six new intakes, but three retired and twenty-three left. As for nurses, you had two hundred and five new recruits, but a hundred and eight then left. For Anti-East, you had two hundred and fifty-three new intakes. And then you have fifty-eight new intakes and some forty-two left. That means as long as the doctors at public hospitals acquired enough experience, they would leave the public sector. So in the end, private hospitals compete with public hospitals in terms of recruitment. And how can you ensure that public-private partnership schemes would not cause an imbalance of resources and manpower between private and public hospitals? Now, Secretary, now first of all, I invite members not just to read the figures, but also to consider the turnover situation. In fact, in the past two years, the situation has been quite stable. Definitely, there'll be a turnover in public or private hospitals. But, and also, it's true that we have manpower shortage. Apart from the series of measures mentioned, we are also going to step up training. And the H A will also need to make an effort in retaining manpower. And in the H A's review report, which will be launched soon, we're going to suggest that H A should in the future step up training of talents so that public hospitals will be attractive enough for healthcare professionals. Because one of the reasons healthcare professionals stay in public hospitals is that they have training opportunities. Well, the problem is, Secretary, now that we have given them training, we have helped them acquire experience, they leave the sector. How can you ensure that they won't leave the public sector very soon? I'm sorry, time is up. Give a written reply. The next session starts at two P M. I have eight tarts available.